Assessing a lot of, you know, trying to decide what his character for the town. And I still think the bottom line, the output is really not going to be that bad. And it does, on the form, it absolutely addresses things in a very, very good way. On the density allowance, I don't think it's going to be, I think these minor tweaks in the reality of what market is, I don't think it's going to harm this town immediately. But I think in 10 years, we're going to look back and say, wow. We can look 10 years ago. You know, I remember in 2001, which I guess is 15 years ago, when I got asked to run for mayor. And the town, the makeup of the people, people, the type of people, the economics of who could live here, the thought processes of people was 80, 20, 70, 30, opposite exactly what it is now. And I think the community that's here now wants a lot of these things that are changing. And I think, you know, we've got to be careful because there are, that 30% that don't want these things, and how will we make sure that they don't get quashed, that they don't are disrupted? And so that weighs heavily in my mind and heart of, you know, what is the impact of these changes? And I don't, I feel like we've got to represent the majority. I think there's enough protections for the minority of what people want. And so that's, you know, but I don't disagree with you. I think you pegged it right on the nose. It's just what, you know, what will happen as a result of this? And I don't feel that the actual impact on usage and density will be all that much with some of these controls in there. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, you know? But if we leave it as is, I mean, somebody, somebody contacted us today, we had a ton of emails, I responded to a lot of them, but, you know, that the right thing is to do nothing. Well, to do nothing is to do something. And, you know, I don't know if this will end up preventing the so-called, I don't want to call it rare, but the new home constructions we've been seeing that people are concerned about. Hopefully it will, because, you know, people don't want it. But I've looked at some of those new homes, and as much as I disagree with them, they're not horrific. They're just houses that I don't want for myself, that I hate to see next to myself. And I walked up and down Dudley, different neighborhoods on Sunday, and, you know, it didn't, I wasn't horrified. I saw a lot of houses that fit this code that I thought were just as abysmal in certain ways, where the cars were parked in front of the house on, you know, the side of drivers. I don't know what we can do, but I feel like this is a community decision that a strong majority of the community wants most of what's in here. And I think at this point, I don't think it's going to harm us to pass it forward, and I think we need to move on with it. So hopefully it'll work.
Counselor Sillier.
Can I respectfully disagree with both of you on one point? And that's about that, I mean, I do think that this, I got three points I want to make. First of which is that I think that this actually is a deeply conservative document and very preservationist in nature. And I actually think that's a result of the fact that this was arrived at through a very lengthy and very public process that took a lot of community input in. And a lot of that community input was in favor of limiting density in the long term and ensuring that the town fabric stays the town fabric. And, you know, everywhere you look in the code, that is really baked in. I think if you had something that was a more transformational document, you would have something maybe that looks more like a pure form-based code, where you have mixed use everywhere to do some of the things I said earlier about maximizing the reuse of the building and ensuring the kind of mixed uses that may be historically pertained in the town back in the teens, 20s, 30s, 40s, before there were these kind of suburban zoning codes that came in sort of the early, middle part of the century. Which, by the way, because our town grew up before that, are horribly unsuited to the way our town was actually built in the first place. And so the longer you leave that in place, the more you're going to have new buildings that could develop that look like what Montgomery Avenue looks like today, and looks like what certain buildings in downtown and their setbacks and large parking lots up front look like today. You can picture the ones in the downtown area that are like that, because those are ones that got built post our current zoning code. The longer that stays in place, the more change you will see from, I think, the Norberts that you know. And the document that's here, if you started really with a purely new urbanist form-based code that didn't have a lot of use restrictions in it, you get something pretty transformational. But over a very lengthy period of public input and comment and hammering things out and trying to make it match, I think it matches very well, actually, our current density patterns. And if you do an overlay of the zoning map that's here with our current density, you'll see a couple of hotspots in the downtown area, actually even extending down south in Norbert Avenue, which I think was the genesis of some of the things we talked about earlier tonight. And then in the northeast part of town, along Montgomery Avenue, and in Iona, where all the row houses are, kind of up there, there's a second hotspot. And so the zoning map was developed very much to overlay with what's there today. And also, you'll notice that buy rate uses are actually very limited compared to what you'd have if you had just a wide open code. And it's, a lot of what's inherited into this code, both in terms of use restrictions around the borough and a buy rate basis, and even to some extent on a conditional use basis, a special exemption basis, are very similar to what we kept today. Residential remains, by and large residential, commercial remains, by and large commercial or mixed use in the sense of in the downtown area, you've got business on the first floor apartments above. So I think what you wound up with through all this comment is a fairly conservative document that actually, to get to a second point here, I and a lot of constituents that I talk to, not everybody, moved to Norbert because it is urban to some degree, right? It's, you know, there are a lot of folks who moved out of the city to get to a city in a good school district, right? Not to move to like Bala Forte, right? Not to pick on our neighbors, but, you know, there are plenty of places to move that are not urban, like small, small view urban, right? We're not, we're not Barcelona, but we're, you know, we got our downtown area with amenities and movie theaters you can walk to, you don't have to drive your car on the weekends, you know, not living in a cul-de-sac and having to hop in your car every time you want to go to the store. That's, you know, part of the definition of urban. And, you know, I think one of the reasons we're attractive and we're becoming more attractive as a community is that we are that, right? So you've got some part of the town, and it sometimes overlaps. These groups are not like two groups of people, it's lots of people with different opinions, there's a lot of overlapping, who want to see more mixed use and maybe more density, because that's kind of the mindset they come from. You've got folks who want to see limits to density and things to stay roughly the same. If I look at where the code ended up, I feel like it ended up very much aligned with like finding a way to keep things to stay as the same as they can. So as a set point for going forward, I think it limits the amount of change you're going to see. And, you know, that actually means it's a decent set of compromises to build the firm in the future and then, you know, determine as things go how much further change you And the last thing I want to point, specifically the Montgomery County area, the Montgomery, not County, Montgomery Avenue area, that was actually one of the biggest changes in this code, like the most that really preserved the built environment. Montgomery Avenue was the one part of the code, and, you know, other folks who've spent a lot of time with the document maybe can elaborate on this more than I can, but, you know, right now, that's the part of town that was built in a period where we had high minimum parking requirements and really wide setbacks, and you got, you know, pretty busy roads, so people built wazzy strip mall kind of stuff there. Of all the parts of town that I can see changing based on what's in the code here, Montgomery Avenue is probably the biggest, like, not immediately, none of this will happen immediately, takes time for people to turn over buildings and things to change, so it's like boiling frog. You see a little bit of change here and there, and then you look up in 20 years and all of a sudden, it's different. I think most of the town, because we're supplanting the old code with new code if we pass it and it stays roughly like it is, what you see is not a ton of change over time. Montgomery Avenue, I think you probably will see change over time as things get redeveloped. And Montgomery Avenue does permit, that's 5B, right? That does permit apartment buildings and multi-use. So, no? AB and U buy rate uses in 5B? What am I imagining? Did that change?
Yes.
Yeah, changed.
A long time ago.
Well, yeah.
It's charted.
But the setbacks are a lot different.
Yes, the parking is different.
Setbacks and the parking are different. So to a minimum, you're going to see buildings that are a lot closer to the street with entrances off sidewalk and parking behind, kind of like what you see in downtown Hurley District right now. So I'd say if you're looking for kind of transformation in the built environment in the town, you most likely will see it there because of the fact that it makes that part of town look more like what's in the downtown Hurley District, and that's...
It's meant to reflect our downtown.
It's meant to reflect the fact that that is a multi-use, multi-service, more dense area of town that's on bus transit.
Right.
I think that's how that should check out right now. I'm a little surprised that I'm looking at the wrong chart.
So it's getting late. Does anyone else have anything to add or can we move to a vote?
I'll check.
Okay. All in favor of moving the Form 8 zoning code draft 4.1 with the five changes that I outlined previously to a hearing? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
We have one change.
What is your change?
We have an objection in this version.
Kind of procedurally, yeah.
Yeah.
What is your change?
I'm sorry, Charlie. If you look at the version, the 351 version, it's now back in this version. There's two earlier versions that did not appear.
Is that the apartment building in 5B? Was just removed from 5B?
It was not in the, in the...
The votes are not mediated because I think not everybody was listening. So let me step back.
I wanted to say if it wasn't for 4.0.
Right.
And what is this?
This 4.0 is still there.
No, it wasn't.
You just printed it for the...
It was not in 4.0. And it wasn't...
Just a moment.
It wasn't in the previous, it went before that.
Let's make sure this is right.
Over the summer, before the summer.
Sorry. Was this...
It should be.
So what do I want to cross out? I'm just at the safety. Okay. Counselor, would you like, Gray, could you move to amend your motion that in addition to the five stated amendments that we would, I don't think I'm going to have any disagreement.
Wait a minute. No, no, no.
Okay. Well, taking apartment building out of the opportunities. Let's go back to discussion. So in the 5B district, which is on Montgomery Avenue, apartment buildings were permitted. And then at some point in the 4.0, which was published in March, they were removed, and they probably just due to an oversight have reappeared. But now here it's in debate that some councils would like it to stay.
Is the apartment buildings where the first floor had some sort of office and detail?
AB is pure apartment.
AB is apartment building type, MU is mixed use building type.
It's mixed use, not pure apartment.
But not pure apartment.
I thought you said you were taking, I misunderstood, I thought you were taking both of them out. So what we're discussing is removing apartment buildings from the 5B district and permitting mixed use, that would be commercial use on the first floor and living units above.
Is that the goal?
Right, that's the goal. 5B is detailed, you know, along Montgomery Avenue.
And you get the upstairs to...
That's right, we get to use the air. So would you like to make that amendment?
Then the 4.1.
With the five previously mentioned changes?
The five previously mentioned changes.
And six?
To include excluding apartment buildings from the 5B.
5B, okay. All right, that is what is on the table. And I'm going to ask for a vote. All in favor of the motion that is on the table? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. It is five in favor, one opposed to move this Form 8 zoning code to a hearing. Mr. Solicitor, could you give us some background on potential dates for that hearing?
Well, today is March 14th, but there needs to be 30 days for both planning commissions to review the county and Norbert. And that's once these changes are actually made to the document and submitted to them. It has to be 30 days from that date. From my calculations, the next meeting, regular meeting council is the 11th. We're already outside of that 30-day requirement that needs to be procedurally enacted. So it would have to be after our next regularly scheduled council meeting. The only other requirements that would be needed would be two consecutive advertisements at least a week before the meeting. And we would need to post throughout the borough notices of the zoning map changes that affect those areas. And that needs to be done also a week before the hearing, at least a week before the hearing. So because of my understanding that the advertisements usually go on Saturdays, those would have to be two consecutive Saturdays, advertising a hearing that's, again, more than seven days past that Saturday, which would take us into the other week. So based upon that, what day would you like to have? Now, we could, we can also advertise for both a special meeting to also do the vote that same night. And I would recommend that be done.
I think that we should do it. Whether council chooses to take advantage of that, the advertising cost would basically be the same, so we should give ourselves the option.
Correct, we'd do a few more lines. If this was advertised, if, it really is based upon when we'd be able to get it to the planning commissions. When do we believe that we'd be able to make these changes and formally submit them to the planning commissions?
Yeah, you just tell me when.
Let's think for this one.
So if it was submitted to the planning commissions on the 16th, April 15th is a Friday, that would be at least 30 days. So if this was advertised on April 2nd and April 9th, we'd be able to have a hearing the week of the 18th of April. And it really does not matter what day of that week.
Okay, I know there is a holiday that week for some people, so I would aim maybe for the beginning, Monday or Tuesday evening, 18th or the 19th. I'd aim for everybody to take into their schedules and their calendars.
It could also be the following as well. It has to be within 60 days of the advertisements.
All right, after about April 18th, all who are available, raise your hands.
For 8pm.
8pm.
I'm going on 5:00.
Charlie, is no good in person or no good at all?
No good in person, unlikely good at all.
Okay.
God, that third week of the month is my...
All right. And what if they were to move it to Monday, April 25th?
Monday, April 25th?
It's the night before the election.
I'd want it down that day.
What's that?
About a town that day.
Tuesday, April 26th is election day.
28, 27, 20.
The 27th, how about the 28th? Thursday, the 28th? Thumbs, thumbs up, thumbs up, thumbs up. All right, let's schedule our hearing for Thursday, April 28th. And Mr. Solicitor, could you speak a little bit towards the rules involved with advertising ordinance like this and when these rules might go into effect if people submitting for land use?
There's no slam dunk in the law. There is something called the pending ordinance doctrine, which has really only been going through the courts for use-based changes to a code. And clearly, a lot of these changes are not use-based, they're dimensionally based. It seems that the same logic would apply, that once it's been expressed by the council that this ordinance is going to be going into effect, as long as it does actually go into effect when planned at that hearing, that you can't then quickly file those permits to get around them. I personally know of judges in Montgomery County who have said, "I'm not going to listen to the pending ordinance doctrine." And then there are issues as to whether that doctrine would start from the advertisement date or from what would be today. So there are lots of gray areas, but needless to say, having it done earlier is a benefit, is an argument to make. If there was an issue that was to arise, to have it enacted today would provide us with a stronger support that those regulations that were passing would need to be followed. But again, it really would depend upon what the permit is stating or the land plan is stating and how it conflicts or if it conflicts with provision of our ordinance.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to our next item of business. Are there any other action items that council members would like to add to the agenda? All right, let's move on to number seven, informational. Mr. Manager, do you have a report?
I do, but I'll just submit the revision report for your appointment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Solicitor, do you have a report?
No, additional report, this comment did mention again that the zoning hearing board did uphold our ZOAA officer's interpretation based upon driveway parking space, and they denied the Canton Avenue permit for application.
Okay, thank you. And I am going to submit the monthly reports of the library, the fire chief, building permit activity, the police chief. Tom, I did not see a police report. Do you have that?
Code term report.
Thank you. Treasurer's report and the tax collector report, as well as, I'm putting in this folder, our borough manager's written report, and all of those will be available to the public if they wish to see them. Come to our new favorite agenda item, comments for the good of council. Does anyone have any positive community news to report or anything else?
The Lekapon Hunt was a huge success.
It was a huge, it was a nice day.
It was a nice day, a huge success. Kudos to the Business Association and Ed Ridgeway, as always, for making that just a terrific day. Lot of fun.
I believe you said we have over 600 kids participate in the hunt this year?
Which is pretty nice for, I mean, the weather was good, but it wasn't, you know, amazing, so that's good.
Good.
Any others?
I don't know, it's whether it's new business or I guess it's new business.
Okay, any old business? New business, Counselor Richmond.
So I want to just clarify with our solicitor that I seem to recall back in, I seem, they can hear me. I recall, I can't remember whether this was late fall or sometime last year, we, the idea of the late demolition ordinance was discussed. And we could not figure out a way to do that, but we were told that when there's an application is put in, we can have the next number of days, and that we should wait until the last minute. So the question that I had is, because we're trying to prevent tear downs, and we're trying to maximize the opportunity that we have or anyone will have before they are, any demolitions are approved, I just want to clarify, it's 15 days for residential, it's 30 days for commercial or mixed.
Non-residential.
Non-residential. And when there's a reapplication, the timeline then starts over.
The UCC, which again, is what we've adopted, says that the borough municipality in general has 30 days from the date of an application to make a decision. Once that decision is, that made, if it was denied, the applicant would then have to reapply. So my interpretation, and I think it's pretty widely held, is that it would be another 30 days from that reapplication of that time. Because again, the idea is that the borough would need to look at the additional information provided and have the time to make a decision. Otherwise, you know, if you got a decision denying someone on the 29th, you'd have one day to get it back. That just doesn't make sense. So that would be correct, that it'd be, whatever the time may be, it'd be from the resubmission of that.
Does anyone know what, so the ordinance on Friday that was approved, the demolition permit that was approved, how, what I don't understand is, did we use our maximum of allotted time to hold on to it, even with the reapplication? And are we, are we now not doing that anymore? Like, have we decided to just give them whatever we want?
I don't believe I made a recommendation that we wait for the last day. I think that the borough would be able to do that, and the UCC perhaps 30 days to do it. I'm unaware of when the reapplication was made, I wasn't even aware that a reapplication was made until...
It was March 11th.
It was March 11th. So we would have had to tell the state report. So I just, the reason I'm asking is because we had lots of discussion last fall about this delayed demolition, and to give ourselves the maximum amount of time that's where we approve it. And I'm asking if we're changing our minds on that now, or are we trying to stick to keeping all those days in our favor so we can look at every last detail?
I think the important thing for us to do is to treat all applicants the same. And it is the discretion of council to tell the office, get them out as quickly as possible, you know, permits in general, or not, you know, use the maximum amount of time.
And I felt we did.
I think that for a residential demolition, there's a little bit of a difference between residential and commercial, not only the time difference, but that, I think residential demolition is often less technically complex. I know that the permit, that, you know, the borough said that it issued a demolition permit, and the first line of the permit is set up a fence and call the engineer to schedule an appointment. So unlike a demolition permit where it's kind of like, here you go, go ahead and get started, I think we all knew that nothing is going to happen to that building until there's a process that's going to play itself out, because it is a complex.
And I thought it was...
Take a look at this, this is actions for demolition that are required.
I didn't know that it was a resolution, I thought it was more of an agreement.
Well, I don't think it was.
It was not a resolution.
We made a, we made a, the building was only going to be made to request that the office send notifications to the neighbors of any buildings that were, that had, where there'd been an application for construction, demolition.
Yeah, a secretive distance of the...
The neighbors of the building associated demolition.
And wasn't the application sent?
There was conversation, there were conversations about the time, that's what I recall, the conversations about the time. I don't know that there was any kind of motion or...
We're being very detailed.
In my view, the, any kind of permit, whether it's for construction or demolition, is considered a construction permit. And I think all of us would want to be treated the same, you know, we kind of, I mean, if I were to file an application for construction or demolition at my home, I would want to be treated the same as everyone else. And I think we're, my understanding is that...
My understanding was that within the framework of the public asking borough council last fall to do something about the tear downs, that there was a detailed conversation about what we can do, what tools do we have? And the only thing that came up was, well, we should have directed the office to use the maximum amount of time within its, and that would be for everybody, not just one person or this or that person randomly, it'd be for all people. And we keep, and I remember Sean saying that it would be the Friday before, you know, was due, so that if it was due, say, on next Wednesday, there'd be still a little time for there to be a reaction, when literally be on the Wednesday. I remember that detail, level of detail in the conversation, so I'm asking whether we're changing that, and if we are, why?
Why don't we take this as an opportunity to clarify policy to the office as to what we would like them to do?
To me, I think that's exactly what we talked about a few months ago, we should just reiterate that any type of construction permit, be it a fence, be it a construction, be it demolition, the borough was going to post it on, let's say, like this permanent request, and that we were going to not issue it till near the end of the time period. And that would give, wouldn't give neighbors any right to speak up.
That's right. That's right.
But it would give neighbors the right to know that something is happening near them in case they have to, or want to do any type of action. And we really spoke, when we go back to the minutes later, we'll find that we very clearly discussed this in the format that we described.
Because it was a more towarded discussion, so we couldn't do that. We couldn't do that in time. And I was surprised that it brought your attention.
But the question, I mean, the question, I have a question for the solicitor on this. The office is governed by the UCC, right? And that's the law, that's what they're governed by as a guideline when they do the job.
The permitting process.
The permitting, when they're doing the permitting process. And so the UCC basically says, and this is like, this gets to like how we, as a body, manage the office as the executive in town, right? We've got a written set of rules that they work by. And that written set of rules says, the only reviewer of these permit applications is the building inspector. Very clear about that, lists out all the characters in the UCC, what are the things the building inspector inspects, but that's their call. And it says you've got up to, whatever the different ranges of days are, up to that to do it. And usually, within that, you're trying to provide, you know, good level of service for permit applicants. If in addition to what's in the UCC, we want to give specific guidance to the office to, you know, add rules on or stick to a consistently applicable rule for how to process an application, I don't know that having that in the meeting minutes cuts it. Then we need like a resolution or something that sort of gives reading guidance.
It would need to be actually an ordinance. I mean, if council wanted to pass an ordinance saying that we want every demolition permit to go through the mayor, you could pass that ordinance. And then that system was set up, and it didn't go through the mayor, that would then be issued in error, and that would be reasons to revoke. Or that doesn't, my understanding is that doesn't exist.
How about in terms of timing?
So in terms of timing, whatever system council wants to set up, it has to result in that permit being either, use the word exactly, a building official shall grant or deny a permit application and hold or impart within 30 business days. And it's business days too, so that's actually extended of the filing date. So as long as you're within that 30 business days, the system within that could be left up to council as long as it doesn't conflict with any of these.
Right, but that system is set up by ordinance resolution or just like open discussion?
No, it would be, it would need to be in ordinance.
We all agreed that that was the same case several months ago, but we dealt with it as a policy. And our concern was not for the developers, our concern was for the residents. That the residents, when their neighbors were doing something, had an opportunity to understand what was going on and not just have construction vehicles show up there next door on that day. So we talked about this at one of the meetings, and we all agreed that it's a very simple policy-style decision that it doesn't need to be an ordinance, that we hold on to this. Now, I don't know if Sean didn't recognize it, or if he was pressured because there's so much going on, but you know, this, there's a lot of concern about this demolition permit. And you know, our is your employees qualified to talk about this? And I think if we had more time to let others review it, maybe something may have come up and said, whoa, this is a dangerous thing for our community. And this could be not just this one, it could be, you know, somebody posted to do something in their house. There's a lot of different things that go on. And I mean, it's all originated, I think, a lot out of, you know, when Eli put his large garage up there, and the neighbor didn't have a chance to see that.
Well, in the downtown property, all the...
These are solicitor, is it possible, if council wanted to do this, to move to an ordinance specifically restricting to demolition permits? Or would it have to apply to all permits in the construction realm equally? How?
I mean, I would not pass an ordinance regarding any permit days. I mean, obviously, if there wants to be a policy, you're well within your rights to set up a formal policy, as long as it's within these requirements. But it shouldn't be something that is a law that's enacted.
Would it be appropriate to mark out a certain type of permit versus all permit?
I believe so, yes. As long as everyone that's applying for that particular permit is free to use. So you're not giving some people five days and some people on the 25th.
And that's my concern, is that we've sort of set it, we've written it down everywhere and said that this is applicable to everybody. And this...
I'm saying it's applicable to everybody, because you never know when the next one...
Well, we're going to look at our...
And what I'm looking at for is, I don't want somebody to say, "You denied my application." All the other ones you processed in five days.
But I actually, I think we actually have that problem right now, because we approved a demolition on a Friday when weekends don't even count. So if weekends don't even count towards business days, anything without on a Friday makes no sense whatsoever. You would at least give yourself till Monday, because those two days don't count against you. So you have an extra two days. So the point would be, why do something on a Friday when you, because you don't know what's going to come up? The building could fall on its own or something you don't know. You have the 30 days by law or 15 days by law. You have an additional 15 or 30 days when there's a reapplication. It's in our interest as borough to use that time. How we use it, the law already says we have that time. The question is directing the office, because there's such a concern about these tear downs, to use their maximum allowed allotted time under the law for everybody.
So does council want to set that policy? Do we want to agree? I mean, do we want to look back, do we want to look forward? I'm not hearing different things.
If I fight for a building, I want to build it as quickly as possible. I think if my HVAC contractor comes in and applies for a building permit, I think it's a waste of their time if they can't just obtain the permit as quickly as possible. So if we're to become a town that has a policy that all permit applications will be either approved on the last day possible, it makes it very...
This is about the demolition that's more in particular.
Well, permits for demolition are the same as a permit for construction.
Well, it's the same with the UCC, but again, first off, I'd recommend that council not pass any policy saying, "We're going to just sit on any permit for a certain amount of time for no reason." Now, obviously, if there are reasons that council wants to give more attention to certain permits, it could be as specific as demolition permits for entire structures, because those are related, that those need a more thorough investigation, they want the inspectors to really take the time to look at it. So the expectation is that those permits will take longer and will likely be towards the end. I think that's a better direction to the borough office, is to allow more consideration, more time to make those decisions.
You mean that there's a transitional time? I've heard time and time since the transition occurred, that we've had to use office hours of the organization work, there's strong calls which have to be returned, there's emails that have to be returned. Maybe it's best to use this policy to live three days, because someone may try to get someone in office and they can't respond.
No, no. I thought we talked about this, the idea to make a public policy.
I'd like to make a suggestion, which is that we go back and we look at the record and we see what we did. And then we see if this city council agrees with what was discussed. And maybe that can give us some framework, because it seemed pretty clear at the time how council felt. And we kind of go from there. Is that, can we do that for next month?
And then just to address the concern that the mayor, that he has concerns about a demolition project, couldn't he call for those to the office or to your piece on his own? So if he has a particular concern, he could say to the engineer, I have a concern about X.
Council Richmond specifically discussed the policy that council brought up. And I think we should, council should talk about council. And so let's take a look at the minutes, let's take a look at the recording, and see where we were. And we can put this on the agenda for next month.
Thanks. Another question, basically, continuing on the demolition permit. I'm not confident at this point that that permit was invented as tightly as I would suspect, based primarily on the price associated with it and everything I've heard about that type of demolition. So the question is, is there anything we can do to have a second body review the permit?
Well, the permit isn't a, a, here you can go at this building and knock it down. I mean, if you, this is really just a permit demolition plan, in that the plan is approved. And the plan has, I mean, 10 actions that need to be done prior to the demolition. Just paraphrasing, disconnecting sewer laterals, disconnecting electric and gas, disconnecting all utilities. Industrials shall be protected from demolition at all times during demolition through temporary construction fencing, which according to the permit has to be reviewed and approved prior to the start of demolition. If asbestos is found, you have to call in a hazardous material expert. The applicant will salvage and remove from the site certain interior doors and fixtures, which I like to hear. Fire extinguisher should be at the site.
I understand all that. I guess what I'm, I haven't seen the detail of what they're doing. We all know that these old buildings have lead, and lead paint.
Right.
What are the things in this that addresses that a bit?
Yes. It requires that there be hoses on site to mist the site and keep everything wetted so that it will be removed and not dust into the environment.
So it is just, it's just a plan. The issue now is to make sure that our inspectors and make sure that the applicant follow the plan and make sure that the plan is being followed if they decide to start this action. But again, they're not able to start any action until they put up that fence and then have that fence actually physically inspected by our building inspector. That would be the first step.
The fence is really just a floor to scare the neighbors further. It's really, it's actually a reality.
Maybe that's what it is, but if people are actually concerned that there's going to be wrecking ball swinging there tomorrow, that could only happen after all these actions were done and it's checked by our engineers.
All right. Thank you.
Should we be concerned to wreck it all or take it apart by block? Is that one of the concerns? Because one of the concerns also, the applicant, who by public record has two employees and does not have any experience in demolition, is that a concern? I'm not saying what's available. That's where the building engineer comes in, because when they do that site visit, and it's not this page, but it's this one. Do you have the other? Here. And I'll just read it to you. Provide, or call your... I understand what you're saying. I understand the cost, the cost is set up. I'm not a force. Well, that's a question for the solicitor. I mean, we receive, I can tell you, we receive permit applications all the time in the borough where the cost seems fairly low and part of the fee that someone pays is based on their cost. I can't speak to it in this situation, but I think that, you know, that's just a little thing.
I don't have the information as to how a building would actually be taken down. I would trust that...
We hope no wrecking ball. We hope no wrecking ball.
If there's a wrecking ball, our building inspector said, "It's safe to use a wrecking ball. Go ahead and use that wrecking ball." Now, whether that is safe or not, I don't have that expertise. Obviously, we had the conversation about the concern to make sure that he's moving his job correctly. And any resident, as well as in their rights, to have those questions or express those concerns.
There's a consensus of council. We can ask our building engineer to come to our speaking and discuss it next. We could, you know, we can, we have access to this individual. He works for us. There's no reason that he needs to be in a box that we can't talk about. Well, let's request it at our next meeting.
Okay.
Can we do that? That would be great.
Caucus, sir.
Let's have him at the next caucus meeting. Yeah, that's our next meeting. Anything else? Okay, I'll take a motion for German.
I'm here.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.